Regular meeting number 28 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Press pro tem, press pro, uh, pro tem dorms, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Samuel Simos from the Northwest Church of the Nazarene to lead us in prayer. Pastor, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's also an honor to do so, especially in a special day with Dr. Jindal. And so what a beautiful day to bring this into an opening. Let us pray. Holy God, we come before you humbled and grateful to stand in your presence. Thank you for your abundant blessings and for the privilege of engaging in meaningful work on behalf of this great city and its citizens. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy, the freedom to embrace you, and even the freedom to walk away, yet you still love us. We are especially grateful for the grace you extend to us, even when we fall short. Tonight, I lift up our mayor Ginter, every city official, and especially this assembled city council. May the agenda before them bear fruit for the good of our community. Grant each council member a listening ear for the people they serve and wisdom to pursue justice in every decision. Bless them both individually and collectively as they carry the weight of representation and leadership. Grant them discernment to govern well and in the complex zip shoes of our day. Give them the ability to work together in unity, even in times of honest disagreement. Help them maintain a spirit of openness and respect even toward those who oppose them. We pray for every council member, guest, and attendee, those in this room and those joining online. May they experience a personal peace and find joy in the work before them. Let this meeting be calm, productive, and marked by wisdom and efficiency. We may extend grace to others, as you extended to us. We ask all this in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to suspend the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
This week's, are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Here, none. The journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any resolutions or announcements by my colleagues? I'm going to start with Councilman Bankston. Thank you. Councilman Barrosa de Padilla.
Uh, yes, Council President. First, I want to wish everyone a happy Pride Month. I know we'll be celebrating with an illumination ceremony. June is a busy month. It's also Immigrant Heritage Month and Caribbean Heritage Month. I'm proud to be part of both of those communities, and we'll learn more about those and celebrate and acknowledge them later in the month. But I just wanted to first send out good wishes. And second of all, a special invitation. My office is sponsoring two events in District Eight. First is a series called Up Next, so talking about what is up next in District Eight and all the good things that are happening. So we're inviting folks to join us if you live on the east side of the district on June 5th, that's this Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Crittendon Center. And then for all of our south side District Eight residents to join us on June 11th, so that's next Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:30 at Faces Starting Point Family Center on Lockborn Road. So if folks visit my social media channels or city council's social media channels, you can go and learn more about these events. RSVP is highly encouraged, but not required, and I hope to see residents there. While this is focused on District Eight, obviously it's open to anyone if you want to learn more about what's happening on the southeast area of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beatty.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember de Akhawer.
Thank you, Council President. I have one announcement. On June 11th, I will be hosting community hours for the Pakistani-American community. It will be held at the Pakistani-American Community Resource Center at 4501 Refugee Road. You can stop by anytime between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. to chat, to ask questions about city initiatives, projects that I'm working on, also any questions you might have about something where you might be requiring assistance. And we will also have some free food there provided by our hosts. So that's June 11th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Pakistani-American Community Service Center. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Press pro tem.
Thank you, Council President. I got a few announcements this evening. First, I want to announce the Finance and Governance Chair. Bankston and I will be hosting a public hearing on proposed legislation extending prohibiting wage requirements to private construction projects with significant city investment. That hearing will be held here in council chambers at 1 o'clock this Wednesday, June 11th. Residents can join certainly in person or can certainly tune in online on the city's YouTube and Facebook pages. Any resident seeking to submit testimony should do so at my office by emailing my aide, annymcdonald@abmcdonald@columbus.gov by 11:00 a.m. on June 11th for that hearing. Additionally, tonight, we have on our first read agenda, we just want to note because we had a public hearing on this last week here in council chambers, the zoning update for the 161 corridor. We will be hearing that legislation for a vote next week. We also have a, we also have an additional piece of legislation that's also in first read tonight that is part of that overall zoning package that will update Columbus's outdated graphics code to accommodate certain types of digital graphic installations near downtown and surrounding areas. Planning to refer that legislation back to committee for additional feedback so that it can go before the Graphics Commission, and then that will hopefully be heard by council later this month for a vote as well. Those are both my announcements this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Press Pro Tem. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Remy.
Just wish everybody happy Pride.
Councilmember White.
Thank you, Council President. Just one quick announcement. Our next Wednesdays with White will take place this Wednesday, June 4th, at Smokey Row Brother and Church from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Similar to all the community hours, all are welcome to attend. RSVPs are encouraged. However, we will be hanging outside by the fire pit at the church. Weather is going to be hot, so probably won't have a fire, but maybe some popsicles, but looking forward to seeing everyone there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, as everyone has said, this is Pride Month, and we are so excited that we get to host tonight the Pride Illumination Ceremony. So if folks are, would want to stay, it's really an amazing ceremony. It'll start around 7:30. We have the Wawuru drummers who will kick us off, the Columbus Gay Men's Chorus, and so much more, as we honor former council member Mary Jo Hudson and community activist and advocate Mr. Tom Grody with the Schellerberger Community Illuminator Award. So this would encourage folks to stick around and be a part of that great celebration. But I am really excited to celebrate someone who means so much to so many in this community and I think to so many on this council personally. I'm going to start to read this resolution, but I would invite up Dr. J.S. Jindal. We are celebrating Dr. Jindal and his family. Come forward, Jindal family. So I have Resolution 0123X-2025. Tonight is to honor Dr. Jindal and his commitment to community service, health, and to celebrate his 90th birthday. Dr. Jindal and family are coming up, but we are honoring Dr. Jindal and his devoted life in service, compassion, and leadership in healthcare, education, and community empowerment. Dr. Jindal has served the Columbus community for decades, acting as a mentor, an advocate, and a role model to generations of residents. He has been a longtime volunteer with the American Red Cross, helping to create emergency response, humanitarian relief, and lifesaving care programs. He has promoted efforts for cross-cultural understanding and unity around to build inclusive and connected Columbus. It is an honor to have Dr. Jindal with us this evening. He truly, truly, truly is someone who is about bringing us all together and showing the humanity in each of us. And I'm so excited to celebrate you, your work, and your 90th birthday. So I'm going to turn it over to the family first, or to Dr. Jindal, and then we'll open it up.
Good evening. Namaste. Namaste means I bow to the divinity within you. President Harden, members of the Columbus City Council, and esteemed guests. It is with deep gratitude that I stand before you today. Thank you for the beautiful resolution honoring my 90th birthday. This recognition is a humbling and meaningful gesture. Columbus has been a big part of my story for many decades, and I have seen it grow, change, and flourish. It has given me a community, a sense of belonging, and more memories than I could ever count. When I moved here over 45 years ago, Columbus welcomed me and helped my family grow roots. The true beauty of Columbus lies in its diversity, a richness, and thought, age, heritage, and faith. That is why early on, I became deeply involved in the interfaith organization. I believed then, as I do now, that unity and respect are the cornerstone of the strong community. We celebrated India's Independence Day in 1983, hosting Governor Celeste and India's ambassador, Dr. R.K. Narayanan, with about 200 guests. Together, we established the Interfaith Room at the Columbus International Festi- Internation- sorry. Together, we established Interfaith Room at the Columbus International Airport in 1996, an enduring space for reflection, prayer, and shared humility, and continues to serve travelers from all walks of life. In that same spirit, I chaired the Columbus International Festival for many years with the hope of celebrating the many vibrant cultures and make up this city. It was a vision rooted in the belief that when we come together in celebration of our differences, we build a stronger, more compassionate whole. Beyond these efforts, I have had the privilege of serving with Red Cross and other community and state organizations. Throughout my journey, I have tried to live by a guiding principle captured so beautifully by Pope Francis. Rivers do not drink their own water. Trees do not eat their own fruit. Life is good when you are happy, but much better when others are happy because of you. Living to see 90 years is a blessing. This resolution is not just a celebration of age. It is a celebration of life, of family, of community, and of the values that bind us together. It means more than I can say, to be surrounded by my children, my grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and all those who have supported and loved me along the way. Columbus City Council President, Honorable Shannon Harden, is my family. He has a great reason for our Columbus community. He helped to initiate the Diwali Celebration, a Hindu Sanatan festival, in 2021 to honor the Columbus Indian community. This was the first celebration in central Ohio. Since 2022, Columbus City Council has hosted a Diwali dinner. Following that, other cities started as well. I would also like to appreciate Linda for her support and guidance. Thank you once again for this extraordinary honor. May Columbus continue to be a beacon of unity and progress. And may we each continue to find strength in our shared humanity and kindness in one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jindal. Dr. Jindal is proof that you can be so kind and so compassionate and so connected and still get things done on behalf of people. And it's really an honor to celebrate you. Do my colleagues have any things to say? Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Well, Dr. Jindal, I just want to say, when I think of you, I think three words come to mind: kindness, generosity, and love. And I also get so emotional looking at you. You remind me so much of my own dad. But that is sad. I'm going to take a deep breath. You know, it's interesting because I was a kid who grew up at the Columbus International Festival. So as a kid, every single year, the club that my parents belonged to had a booth. And I remember dressing up in a kimono and running around the festival and eating foods from all over the world, and literally with a whole crew of kids that represented every corner of the globe, right? And we had passports, and you would go to each booth and get your passport stamped. And then you, you were so excited, and it gave you the opportunity to meet people from other cultures, to see how alike we are because we were proximate to other people. And I think it is that teaching that you leave as a legacy in this community. I mean, I think about your two granddaughters who worked here at council, who have gone on to the prosecutor's office, that they're on the first, serving on the first commission for immigrant and refugee affairs, and that is your living legacy, right? I think about not just in your own community, but how you have touched this community in so many ways. Until we met, you had no idea what my story was and how we were connected and how that shaped my view of the world. And so I think you are such a gift. And you keep on giving through your family and through your legacy. And I just want to say thank you. Namaste, my friend. And it is such an honor to celebrate you in this way.
I'm touched. Thank you. Thank you.
If there are no further comments from my colleagues, I move for adoption of 0108X-2025. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
At this time, I request the following ordinance be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. Ordinance 1193-2025 from the Health and Human Service and Equity Committee, and ordinance 1204-2025 from the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee. Are there any other requests by members of council? Here and now, may we now have a motion to waive readings of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we, we don't have any speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 1159 and 1222-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance 1319-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 1263, 1320, 1333, I'm sorry, 1336, 1350, 1351, 1352, and 1406-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinance 990 and 1265-2025. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinance 1215 and 1311-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 1243-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 1308-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1120, 1144, 1268, and 1317-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinance 1354 and 1420, I'm sorry, 1350, yes, 1354 and 1423-2025. Rules and Policy Committee, ordinance is 1417, 1418, 1419, and 1579-2025. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 1485-2025. Variances, we have ordinance 2170-2024, and 1459, 1476, 1486, 1488, 1491, 1492, and 1493-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of expression, 142X, 143X, 126X, 127X, 129X, and 145X-2025. Finance and Governance Committee, ordinance 1085, 1221, 1246, 1254, 1269, 1281, 1283, and 1356-2025, 1358, and 1382-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, ordinance 1375, 1376, 1378, 1421, and 1537-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 1219, 1239, 1301, 1304, and 1305-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinance 1245, 1272, 1273, 1279, 1291, 1489, and 1524-2025. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinance 1310 and 1360-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 1193-2025, 1240-2025, 1379, and 1380-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinances 1153, 1227, 1228, 1244, and 1293-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1126, 1142, 1143, 1151, 1171, 1183, 1204, 1241, and 1259-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinance 1100, 1211, 1297, 1314, 1326, and 1355-2025. Appointments from the mayor's office, A97, A98, A99, A100, A101, A102, A103, A104, A105, and A106-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no speakers on the consent portion of the agenda, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden. By voice.
By voice.
By voice. Sorry. Bankston. Barrosa de Padilla. Beatty. De Akhawer. Dorance. Green. Remy. White. President Harden.
Yes. The consent portion of the agenda carries with a noted exception. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee, chaired by council member Bankston. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First, up in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 1368-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Division of Fleet Management to renew a contract with Asset Works LLC for fleet management software services for the city's fleet vehicles to authorize the expenditure of $1,150,000 from the fleet operating fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a contract renewal for Asset Works LLC. Asset Works is the enterprise software solution for the fleet management division, which manages the city's fleet of over 6,000 vehicles. The Asset Works system provides a software platform that processes, manages, monitors, and analyzes all maintenance, inventory, work order, and fuel-related data. This system helps to ensure that the city's fleet is managed and maintained in order to maximize efficiency and effectiveness. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
And last, in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 1431-2025 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a one-year contract with Una Solutions, Inc. for unlimited licenses to use the software solution and professional services related to Bonfire Strategic Sourcing Platform to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Codes to authorize expenditure of $168,813.16 and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a contract renewal with Una Solutions for the Bonfire Strategic Sourcing Platform. This subscription-based software allows city employees to solicit, receive, and evaluate requests for proposals and best value procurements in an online procurement system. This platform is administered by the purchasing office and is made available to city staff for their procurement needs. The city has used the software since 2018. A waiver of competitive bidding for provisions of City Code is being requested in order to continue the use of the particular software and to maintain continuity of this particular procurement system. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. So I have my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have two ordinances today in Public Service and Transportation. The first is 1255-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into contract with the Complete General Construction Company for the Signals Deering Avenue at South High Street Project to authorize the expenditure of $1,131,444.60 from the Streets, Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract includes replacing the existing span wire traffic signal at the intersection of Deering Avenue and South High Street. The Deering Avenue at South High Street Project includes installation of curb ramps, division of power, utility reallocations, lighting modifications, new signal, and pavement markings, and other work as may be necessary. The estimated notice to proceed pending today's outcome is June 5th, 2025. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1307-2025 to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Complete General Construction Company for the bridge rehabilitation, Kimberly Parkway Over Mason Run Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,536,290.24 from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund and the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. This project includes the replacement of an existing bridge over Mason Run. This is in the middle of a residential area, so this is very exciting. The new structure will accommodate two-lane traffic, widen sidewalks on both The new structure will accommodate two-lane traffic, widen sidewalks on both sides to accommodate both cyclists and pedestrians. And the estimated notice to proceed date is June 23, 2025. This project does call for a two-to-three-month closure of the bridge. Detours will be denoted along the way, and there will be outreach and signage to update residents of the construction. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember De Akhaur. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have one ordinance this evening. Ordinance 922-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks to enter into contract with Ironsite Incorporated for the Gender Road Park Project to authorize the appropriation of $2,630,582.20 within the Recreation Parks Permanent Improvement Fund to authorize the transfer of $2,630,582.20 within the Recreation Parks and Permanent Improvement Fund to authorize the amendment of the 2024 capital improvements budget and to authorize the expenditure of $2,630,582.20 from Recreation Parks Permanent Improvement Fund. This project will be for the construction of park improvements at Gender Road Park, located in southeast Columbus, adjacent to the Pickington Ponds Metro Park. The improvements will include a new playground, sports courts, and a new picnic area. There will also be a new 18-haul disc golf course, which will be completed just as the Hoover Course has to temporarily close for construction. These amenities will create a new regional destination for southeast communities and beyond, providing additional sports courts and shelters for community gatherings. Design of this project was informed by neighborhood input gathered at two public meetings. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Workforce Education and Labor Committee, chaired by President Protim. President Protim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, we have ordinance number 1216-2025 to authorize the Director of Mayor's Office of Education in a Contract United Way of Central Ohio, Inc. for the purposes of acting a fiscal agent for the program to assist in the planning and coordinating services and distribute funds and program support to after-school providers, to authorize the expenditure of $2 million from the general fund and declare emergency. This legislation authorizes our city's Office of Education to invest $2 million in the after-school programming for over 1,000 Columbus Middle School students. This will begin in September of 2025 for the 2025-2026 school year. The program is a great collaboration between the city, Columbus City Schools, and the United Way of Central Ohio, the YMCA of Central Ohio, Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio, which will serve children all across our city, giving them a safe place to go when school is out with academically enriching and supportive environments for those hours after school. This legislation is designated as emergency, so that providers can begin hiring staff and purchasing materials in time for next school year. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. All I have at this time in my committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services and Equity Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have four ordinances on second reading. The first one is ordinance 1208-2025 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to make payments to Hana Commercial LLC on behalf of the Central Ohio Area on Aging to modify and extend the current four-year building maintenance service contract for an additional six months, to authorize the expenditure of $225,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. The Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, or COAA, its offices at 3776 South High Street in Columbus. There is an existing four-year contract in place for building maintenance and management for this location. The fourth year of the contract will expire on June 30 of 2025. This ordinance requests an extension of the four-year contract term for an additional six months. This extension will allow for building maintenance to be maintained for the remainder of 2025. Emergency action is requested so that building maintenance services will continue without interruption. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Our second ordinance tonight is ordinance 1344-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to appropriate the amount of $102,474,640 within the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the Recreation and Parks Department to provide home care and assisted living services to older adults in connection with the pre-admission screening system, providing options and resources today, or PASPORT Medicaid waiver program in Central Ohio, and to declare an emergency. The PASPORT program is a state Medicaid home care alternative to nursing home care. It's one of several Medicaid waiver programs COAA manages. COAA has been administering PASPORT since 1984, serving approximately 8,700 people over sixty, over the age of sixty in eight counties. COAA screens, assesses, and coordinates services for clients, and they also certify providers on behalf of the state and purchase services on behalf of clients. There are 664 agency providers in addition to individual independent providers available to assist clients. Emergency action is requested in order to have funding available in the proper accounts for continued operations, as this program provides a vital service to individuals and caregivers, allowing them to remain in the community and at home. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And then, as I introduce this next ordinance, I'd love to invite Katie White, our Executive Director from COAA, to the podium. The, this next ordinance is ordinance 1348-2025 to authorize and direct the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with the agencies listed on the attachment here, too, for the provision of pre-admission screening system, providing options and resources today, PASPORT, home care, and assisted living services for older adults in Central Ohio for the period of July 1, 2025 to December 31, 2025, to authorize the expenditure of $86,516,252 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will give the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into various contracts to provide PASPORT, home care, and assisted living services for older adults in Central Ohio for the first year of a two-year period, beginning July 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025. Emergency action is requested in order to meet the conditions of the grant so that the providers can be paid within 30 days of providing services and so that the services can continue beyond June 30 of 2025. Director White, I just wanted to turn the floor over to you to talk a little bit more about the PASPORT program and the work that you're doing and, and the program itself.
Sure. We didn't make it easy on you tonight, did we? Language. Good evening, Council President Harden and Councilmembers. Thank you for having me here to provide remarks on the proposed federal changes that I think Chair Green wanted me to speak about, as well as some various concerns going on in the aging community right now. And then, of course, to support our multiple ordinances that are on the agenda tonight. So, the ordinances presented this evening are really to maintain business as usual. These contracts and grants are things that we have signed for more than 25 years, some of them for even longer. So, the Alzheimer's Respite and PASPORT ordinances support COAA staff, as well as provide millions of dollars in services to older adults, people with disabilities, and caregivers. And all of the ordinances this evening are required in order to meet the conditions, rules, and regulations set forth by Ohio Department of Medicaid, Ohio Department of Aging, as we are the designated area agency on aging in Central Ohio. So, moving on from the state, it's good news that I'm here this evening and not last Monday, because as we all know, things are changing quickly at the federal level. And if you've been following any Aging and Disability Services, you know that we had sort of a shift in the positive direction on Friday. So, due to the tremendous advocacy efforts of US Aging, which is our national organization, as well as over 612 area agencies on aging and tribal aging programs across the US, the Trump administration has changed course on how the Department of Health and Human Services reorganization proposal would administer Older Americans Act. So, before last Friday, there was a leaked document that drafted out some pretty significant changes and threats to our services, including proposals to split up the Older Americans Act across different divisions and to cut some pretty significant funds and programs that we administer in COAA. However, on Friday, the administration did indicate a change of plan. So, according to some new budget materials released by HHS on Friday, all of the Older Americans Act programs will be kept together and will be administered in a new area but won't be split apart. And even better news, we'll not be cutting any of the programs that we thought they would cut. So, that would, of course, affect many of our staff members as we are on limited appointments with all of our grants. So, we're feeling cautiously optimistic about that and, of course, making sure that we're not letting up on any of our advocacy. We still have plenty of work ahead. There remains a lot to do to protect the Older Americans Act. I'm joined this evening by my colleague Grant Ames, who heads that up for COAA. Big shout-out to him for all of his advocacy and really hitting the ground these last few weeks to ensure that we don't lose any of our crucial funds. And then, of course, protecting and expanding funding for our home and community-based services and related programs is essential for the well-being and dignity of Central Ohioans. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, to thank you for your support and trust as we move forward in meeting our mandate and our mission. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for being here, Director White, and I am very glad to hear about that update. I think, I think it's important, you know, as we're sitting up here on the dais every single week on Mondays appropriating dollars. In this case, you know, we're looking at 100 million, over $100 million appropriation, you know, and then in the second ordinance here, looking at an 86, almost 87, or 87 million appropriation. You know, we're thinking about this shifting landscape, and we're thinking about cuts at the federal level. We're not potentially just talking about a couple of, a couple of positions that might be eliminated. We're talking about like real significant things that keep getting thrown up in the air. And so, I felt like it was really important to have you here tonight to just talk about that shifting landscape, even though I think when we originally had you here, this conversation would have gone much differently. But the, the fight to protect this funding is still not over. Just so that as we are looking and planning for the future, we can also have an understanding of not just, we have significant gaps that exist today as, as things are, that we need to be working towards, but there's also real potential down the road for significant disruptions if things continue to change. And so, I think, not to, you know, not to repeat myself too often, but this is something that I, I want to continue to try to bring into the space so that we can keep it at the front of our mind and be prepared as, as much and as well-educated as we all can be to pivot if and when, you know, something like that were to ever happen. And I thought this, this appropriation is significant. The work you do is significant. The impact you have is significant and life-saving. And so, it felt incredibly prescient to be able to bring that here today. Do any of my colleagues have any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to say, Chair, thank you for your continued advocacy, and thank you for your work. I think, you know, as we were just celebrating one of our community giants that's turning 90 years old. I remember when I was chairing this committee, and one of the buttons that y'all gave me was, what was it, Aging is Cool? It's something we all want to be, I think, or something.
So cool. Everybody's doing it.
That's the one. You know exactly the one I'm talking about. I mean, that's, that's our, our goal. And I think when, in your youth, it's easy to not think about the road ahead of you and not think about how we take care of others is one day how someone's going to care for us. And so, I think it's at a critical time now, when we talk about folks who are most vulnerable, that we are thinking about our folks who are aging. And everyone loves someone who is an older adult, right? Who has helped to shape your life, and it is now our time to take care of them. And we have a moral responsibility to do that in our community. And so, I just want to thank you for y'all's continued advocacy, for the work that you do every day, because one day, we are all going to find ourselves in that place. And one day, we are all going to potentially look for some or many of the services that we are talking about today that are on the table to be cut. And so, it's an important conversation and one that cannot be left out when we talk about the landscape of, you know, who are dollars going to, when we're cutting dollars, and who we're advocating for, because this is certainly something that will touch everyone's life, hopefully, knock on wood, right? So, I just want to say thank you. And just ensure, as folks are watching, all the things that we talk about here, there is a place for people to show up and advocate in different ways. And if folks are interested in doing that, I highly encourage them to reach out to the Chair's office or any of our offices so that we can lead you in that direction to do that. But thank you.
Absolutely. And talking about Dr. Jindal, he was on our advisory council for many years. And so, just thinking about the wisdom and elders of our community and how that moment came full circle. And he talked about unity and respect, and I think that's what we have here. And I think I could be any social services or human services director standing here this evening, talking about how it's going to take all of us together. And so, I just appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you so much for being here, Director. Our next ordinance is ordinance 1386-2025 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept grant funds from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $1 million and any additional funds for the implementing enhanced HIV prevention and surveillance for health departments to end the HIV epidemic in Ohio grant program following receipt of an executed grant agreement to authorize the appropriation of $1 million and any additional funds awarded from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's grant fund and to declare an emergency. This grant specifically focuses on treating HIV to achieve viral suppression, diagnose HIV so all persons know their HIV status, preventing infections through prep and syringe support programs, and responding to HIV clusters or outbreaks within the community. Persons who are HIV negative are considered to be vulnerable to HIV acquisition and will be provided services through this grant. Priority will be given to those identified as being at the highest level of need as determined by local need, by local data trends. Services include resource navigation, housing first model programming, and other status-neutral initiatives. Multiple partner agencies will implement these services, and the number of clients to be served varies based on subrecipient contracts. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you so much. And then, at this point, Council President, I'd like to request, can we return to page 14 on the consent portion of the agenda?
Sure.
Okay. So, on page 14, I'd like to read ordinance 1193-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept and appropriate a grant from the Ohio Department of Aging in the amount of $24,535 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging in connection with the Seniors Farmer Market Nutrition Program and to declare an emergency. At this point in time, I'd like to move to postpone this agenda item to the June 9 agenda.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Postpone.
Thank you, Council President. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. And I have one ordinance on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. It's 1169-2025 to authorize the Director of the Office of Violence Prevention to enter into contract with Center for Child and Family Advocacy at Nationwide Children's Hospital for Domestic Violence Support Services related to the Advocacy Crisis Team program in partnership with the Columbus Division of Police to authorize the expenditure of $345,130 from general fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Dr. Lunsford to talk about first the waiver of competitive bidding, but then also just more about what this is going for.
Thank you, Chair, Remy. President Harden. Does it go down? Thank you, Chair, Remy. Sorry, excuse me. President Harden and members of council. The Advocacy Crisis Team officially launched as a co-response pilot partnership between the Center for Family Safety and Healing and the Columbus Division of Police in May of 2023. ACTDV advocates respond on domestic violence runs with CPD officers. Officers secure the scene and focus on interviewing, reporting, writing, and evidence collection while advocates are able to listen to survivors and provide triage safety supports. When surveyed, officers shared their confidence in ACTDV, stating that the partnership provides a better response and tangible results for the victims than other programs. While officers acknowledged ACTDV brings a level of comfort and reassurance directly to victims, many requested expanding ACTDV services at some calls landed in voicemail due to limited staffing and availability. Co-response programs across the country have shown a higher trust in public safety and law enforcement, an increase in protection orders filed and granted, and a greater understanding of DV intimate, intimate partner violence dynamics for law enforcement. Expanding ACTDV services would provide the opportunity to continue building trust and safe options for some of our most vulnerable community members. safe options for some of our most vulnerable community members. With this investment from Public Safety and OVP, the Center for Family Safety and Healing will be able to implement co-response across all zones by providing resources for one supervisor to lead the program, provide direction and liaison with CPD leaders and other partners. This expansion would include six co-response advocates to be assigned to each of the police zones.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lunsford. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all I have on Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee chaired by Councilmember Weiss. Councilmember Floris, yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, I have 1002-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification with Prime Construction Management and Survey Incorporated for the Construction Administration Construction Inspection Services 2023-2025 contract to amend the capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds within the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,427,845 from the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund to pay for the project. This ordinance allows the department to use funding for the updating of lateral lines and development of green infrastructure in the Hilltop Neighborhood to advance our goals of updating our water and sewer infrastructure across Columbus to be better prepared for heavier rainfalls. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1103-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase an existing contract in accordance with the pertinent provisions to waive competitive bidding of Columbus City Code with TLA Global Holdings Incorporated doing business as RCC Global LLC for managed and project services related to Oracle's Customer Cloud Service Meter Data Management System, and to authorize the expenditure of $371,820 split between the electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating funds. This ordinance modifies an existing contract with TLA Global Holdings Incorporated doing business as RCC Global LLC to support the continued work on the enhanced meter project. This modification to the contract is intended to support a smooth rollout of smart meters through June of 2026. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1139-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services contract with AECOM Technical Services Inc. for the Three Creeks Relief Tunnel Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the sanitary revolving loan fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $5,569,669.75 from the sanitary revolving loan fund for the contract. This project is necessary to relieve a hydraulic bottleneck in this section of sewer caused by upstream development. This project will be occurring on the far south side and will reduce sewer overflows and water embasement occurrences in the upstream sewer sheds. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1157-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with BLD Services LLC for the Blueprint Hilltop 1 Eureka Fremont Lateral Lining Project 6, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds within the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $8,335,316.21 from the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project. This ordinance is also in support of the city of Columbus's project blueprint to update stormwater infrastructure across the city and reduce flooding and heavy rain events. This ordinance authorizes funding to mitigate stormwater infiltration by repairing leaky joints and cracks in lateral pipes in the Hilltop Neighborhood between West Broad and Sullivan Avenue. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1218-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify a contract with Sinagro Central LLC for the Water Treatment Residuals Turnkey Dewatering Services Project for the Division of Water, to authorize the expenditure of $5,300,000 from the Water Operating Fund. This ordinance modifies an existing contract with Sinagro Central LLC to continue water treatment residuals management services for all three water plants. This contract covers operations and maintenance of the dewatering facility at the McKinley Avenue Quarry and is expected to continue service through 2040. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1242-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Clinton Sewer District Number 3 OSU Camereton District Sewer Extension Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,986,97.62 from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will fund the installation of a new sanitary sewer in the University District to support a mixed-use redevelopment off of OSU West Campus along Woody Hayes Drive. This will also be an opportunity for residents currently on septic to connect to this nude line. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Council President, may I go back to page 17 to ordinance 1204-2025?
Please, please.
Next, I have, last, I have 1204-2025 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase distribution switch gear with Professional Electric Products Co. doing business as Pepco, to authorize the expenditure of $1 and to declare an emergency. I move to refer this back to committee.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Go back to committee.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Housing Home Assistance and Building Committee. I chair that committee. And the first piece of legislation we have is ordinance 1408-2025 is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to modify a grant agreement to add additional funds in the amount of $1,060,000 of U.S. Department of Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance 2 funds to authorize the payment of eligible expenses and to declare an emergency. This legislation tonight is one final piece of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This program began in 2021 with COVID pandemic funding and has provided over $90 million in rent and utility assistance attendance at risk of eviction and homelessness. This program has assisted over 31,000 tenants from ending up evicted or homeless. Additionally, during a time of uncertainty for landlords, this program has provided support to the businesses such as landlords and property owners renting affordable housing. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for a passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
The final piece of legislation, the final committee to come before council is the Rules and Policy Committee. That in Rules and Policy, I have ordinance 1282-2025 is to amend Columbus City Code Section 215.01 and to enact Section 215.11 of Columbus City Codes to create the Division of Housing Stability within the Department of Development, to reduce the Department of Development Office of Administration General Fund appropriation by $657,400, to reduce the Department of Development's Housing Division General Fund appropriation by $131,200, and to authorize the transfer of $525,000 from the General Fund. Citywide account to establish the Division of Housing Stability General Fund appropriation in an amount equal to the reduction of the Office of Administration's General Fund appropriation, the reduction to the Housing Division General Fund appropriation, and the transfer of the General Fund Citywide Account in the amount of $1,313,600. The Division of Housing Stability is a landmark achievement for our city. The Division of Housing Stability represents one strategy helping tackle our city's housing crisis, saying clearly that we need to support tenants in this community while also investing in our housing supply. This division would institutionalize many of the protections City Council championed over the past five years under the Housing for All Package. These protections include source of income, access to counsel at eviction court, prohibition of retaliatory evictions, rental receipt, and more. Also important about this division is that it would coordinate efforts around fair housing and to make sure tenants are protected from discrimination and protected as consumers. Our city must continue to innovate and invest in new strategies to make housing affordable and accessible to all. This really is a really big deal. We appreciate the leadership and the partnership between the Department of Development and council. Director, do you have any additional comments on this?
Thank you, President Harden, members of council. I'd just like to add, over the last couple of years, we have seen many of our residents who have been exploited by property owners. And by taking advantage of those residents, they've been unfairly targeted. And council's action, as well as the administration working together to make sure that we're protecting their rights, is really critical. So I need to give a shout out to my team that was here last week with you on there for your public hearing. Hannah Jones and Aaron Prosser have done a great job leading a team to bring this forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. And I would be remiss to not shout out my former colleague, Councilmember Shayla Faver, who advocated for this for a long time as well. Do my colleagues have any comments on this?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Referring back to the previous ordinance 1408 regarding the emergency rental assistant, would the new housing, Office of Housing Stability, be overseeing the distribution of those funds, the management of those funds?
Director.
Did you hear the question? I'm sorry.
I did. Thank you, Councilmember Beatty, Council President Harden. Yes, as we unfortunately wind down the federal funding that came out of COVID that provided the over $90 million rental assistance, this division will be driving the strategy on how we continue to provide that type of assistance going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, made, Councilmember. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'd like to move to amend to emergency. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Amended, and then I will move for passage. As amended. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Seeing no further business to come before council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have one non-agenda speaker, and that's Mr. Nate Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome.
[Crosstalk][181.73]
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs that committee. All members, sorry, one and councilman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. A little bit of housekeeping before we begin tonight's agenda. Would the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in tonight's zoning committee meeting that require waiver of second reading?
Rezoning and amendments 1369 and 1377-2025, variances 1298, 1333, 1364, 1365, 1370, 1374, and 1395-2025.
Thank you. Next move to waive second reading on those items right along.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Waive.
Thank you. As always, before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We will only hear a staff presentation of ordinance that have a disapproval of recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed up, speak against an ordinance. We permit up to three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of the city council. All speakers in council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of an area commission are always able to speak on an ordinance who do not need to fill out a speaker slip, but we do ask you, alert city staff of your intentions to speak at this committee hearing. We do have one public speaker on a piece of legislation here this evening. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I would now swear in city staff, please stand and raise your right hand, be sworn in. You swear affirming the testimony about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury. If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Eastman Johnson from the Department of Villains Zoning Services, and Dan Bleschman from the Division of Traffic Management from the Department of Public Service have been sworn in. Next, first, we have ordinance number 1369-2025 to rezone 1207 East Whittier Street, being .10 plus acres located in the south side of East Whittier Street, 100 plus feet west of Lockhorn Road from LC 2 Residential District to AR 1 Apartment Residential District. This site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the requested rezoning will allow a four-unit dwelling on this location. Concurrent council variance for a proposed two-unit dwelling with a reduced lot inside yard will be considered later on tonight's agenda. Proposal is approved from the city staff development commission and the south side area commission. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1377-2025 to rezone 4743 and 4745, Cleveland Avenue, being .86 plus acres located in the west side of Cleveland Avenue, 93 plus feet south of Traymouth Road from R 1 Residential District to C 2 Commercial District. Site consists of two parcels, developed with a single-unit dwelling and detached garages, and the requested rezoning will allow for the commercial office developments. Proposal is approved from city staff, development commission, and the Northland Community Council. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. We will now move into the council variances portion of our agenda. We have ordinance 1167-2025 to grant a variance from provisions of section 3356.03(c)(4) permitted uses, 3312.49(c)(4) required parking, 3321.01 dumpster area, and 3363.41a storage of Columbus City Codes property located at 616 East Whittier Street to allow temporary automobile storage with reduced development standards in the C 4 Commercial District. This site consists of one parcel developed with an automobile repair business, which is subject to zoning code violation number 2447006907 for parking and keeping inoperable vehicles on the property. The applicant requests a council variance to allow the storage of automobiles waiting to be repaired on-site. A council variance is required because the current zoning district does not allow storage uses. Variances require parking, dumpster area, and storage setbacks are included in this request. Proposal is approved from city staff and the Columbus South Side Area Commission. We do have one public speaker signed up to speak against this application, so before we hear that public speaker, we'll hear a staff report from the department. Mr. Johnson, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, protam Dorance, members of council. The site consists of one parcel developed with a commercial garage in the C 4 Commercial District, decided subject to violation 2447006907 for parking or keeping inoperable vehicles. The requested council variance will allow automobile storage with a reduction in required parking, dumpster area, and storage. Council variance, pardon, council variance is requested to vary required parking dumpster area and storage requirements of the commercial garage. To the north, east, and west of the site are single and two-unit dwellings in the R 2F Residential District. To the south is a single-unit dwelling in the C 4 Commercial District. The site is within the planning boundaries of the near-southside plan, which recommends commercial neighborhood land uses at this location. Additionally, the plan includes completed adoption of the Columbus citywide planning policies, design guidelines. The site is located within the boundary of the Columbus South Side Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. Staff concurs with the applicant's analysis of the seven practical difficulties in achieving this proposed development. The requested council variance will allow automobile storage with reduced development standards. Staff supports the proposal and is consistent with the near-southside plan's recommendation, and the mesh screening is a mitigating factor that is consistent with C 2p2 design guidelines. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, any questions from colleagues at this point?
Mr. Johnson, just a quick question on, because of the variance, talking about that hardship you mentioned a moment ago. So again, this is currently operating as auto repair facility. Again, because of the zoning district, it's almost impossible to operate such a business on that property that is developed currently in that manner without having this type of storage, you know, basically to allow, again, the repair to exist for these automobiles. Is that a fair assessment when you talk about that hardship that does exist for the applicant?
Yes, that's correct. They have multiple vehicles waiting to be worked on, so it's not parking per se, but more so storage, that'll quickly cycle them out.
And the property currently is developed in a manner that is suited to automobile repair, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the department at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the applicant's representative, Mr. Jared Bach. Mr. Bach, welcome to council. When you get to the podium, I'll swear in real quick, right up there. What am I raising your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
I am just here to represent the owner of this property, to answer any questions regarding this variance. I was told there might be another speaker requesting information on this, so...
Yep, we will have the public speaker assigned to speak against the application here in a moment. You'll be afforded the opportunity to come up to make any comments rebutting that. So I don't know if you have anything in addition you'd like to share at this time?
No.
Just want to ask any council members, do you have any questions for the applicant's representative at this point? Great, seeing none, I'm gonna send you back, so thanks for coming up, being sworn in. I'm gonna have the public speaker come up, and then I'll invite you back up afterwards. Great. As I mentioned, we do have a public speaker signed to speak against the ordinance, Mr. Alex Kirk. Mr. Kirk, welcome to council. Again, same deal, once I get you to the podium, I'll go ahead and swear in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
Certainly. Good evening, my name's Alex Kirk. I'm the owner of Front Port Development. We own the property directly north of this property. It's a duplex that we built a couple of years ago. It's a new property. I would characterize what's happening there as, not just what's on the lot, but in addition, what's happening in the street and in the sidewalk. So the property is generally a mess, and the cars that you're asking to park are not limited to what's on that lot. There are regular customer cars, up and down and street, that belong to that garage. So they're not keeping that in there, storing overnight cars in the public right-ofway additionally. So the problems that I see is that the right-ofway is not defined, so the right-ofway is not defined because it's all asphalt. The street is asphalt, the green space that would be between the sidewalk is asphalt, the sidewalk area is asphalt, and the work area, the lot, is asphalt. It's basically one big sea of asphalt. There's no curb, it's broken, it's missing, it's very, very poorly defined. There are cars parked on that sidewalk on a regular basis, they are not kept in outside the curb and what would be the roadway, they're kind of all over the place. In the solution, there's also gates. The gates are gonna open into the public right-ofway, they're gonna open onto that sidewalk. I'm an architect, I will tell you that is normal and conventional, that a doorway would be either set back, if it was a restaurant or a shop, be set back, or it would open in, right? Those are the two options to not block the sidewalk with any sort of gate or door. The last thing I would say is that the sidewalk in its current condition is dangerous, right? It is not walkable. So we have a brand-new sidewalk, there are sidewalks north of that and south of that, that area right there, I would say, is a dangerous sidewalk. I don't support this, but I would support the current solution. If there was a new sidewalk, if there was a green space that was installed and maintained, and that the gate was a sliding gate, not a gate that opened into the public right-ofway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Any questions from council members for Mr. Kirk at this time?
Okay. Any... So one thing I want to mention, Mr. Kirk, the, once a sidewalk is installed, which I think you are perfectly aware as a property owner within this area, considering you installed a new sidewalk, is, once that sidewalk goes in, it is the responsibility of the property owner to upkeep it. So if in fact that sidewalk has been degraded, that would be on the applicant to, you know, sort of repair that. So that's one thing that I want to make sure that our team here at the city is aware of, and, you know, if that's something that needs to be addressed, then that's sort of outside of a zoning matter, but certainly something that I think we want to make sure is taken into account, to make sure that that area has the, you know, the infrastructure that's required of it.
Right. I bring that up primarily because this solution solves the issue between the back of the sidewalk and the lot. It does not address the issue, and there are cars parked there all the time, and if that's asphalt, an asphalt-green area and asphalt roadway, the problem there will persist from a safety and a pedestrian standpoint.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I did want to invite the applicant's representative back up to speak to anything that they'd like regarding the comments made by Mr. Kirk.
Let's just address, we're putting a fence along that property line to delineate what's gonna be parking, what's public access, walkway, and the gates are gonna be sliding gates, so they're not gonna be intruding on in or out of the property. I cannot speak for the owner on the repair of the sidewalk.
Sure.
That is not on me, so I think this, what we're proposing, kind of solves at least one of his issues. The other issue is something that I would have to talk to the owner about improving the sidewalk and the curbs and stuff.
Okay. Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla?
I do have a question. We're looking at a picture here of just what the property looks like. It is a pretty narrow property.
Yeah.
How many cars would you say do you have there at a time? Just because what it looks like is, part of the issue is that because of the size of the property itself, it just looks like there's too many cars, there's not quite enough room. So I guess the gates would be solving potentially one issue, but if you can't fit all the cars in there, I'm not sure that it solves some of the other issues that we're talking about today.
I had spoken with the owner, and the owner has spoken with the tenant of the space, and they say a lot of these cars are not part of their business. Somebody else along that street has a number of cars that they park there.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with this business, so they're kind of taking the heat for another neighbor's vehicles.
So some of the cars that might be parked, you know, what is being described as kind of on, because there should be a sidewalk there, it looks like, as part of the property. I know you're not the owner.
Yeah.
I would say this, it's challenging to have questions, to answer some of the questions because you can't answer all of them, and I know you're here on behalf of the owner, but it's just challenging when you don't have the knowledge to share some of the things that we're talking about here. So it sounds like they might be parking there, and those are not cars that are part of...
That's, that was what I was made aware of.
Okay.
Putting the new fence in will kind of delineate what the parking's gonna be.
Sure.
And the owner basically has to follow that, they can't...
Because the owner is then renting this out to a business who is actually controlling what's happening on...
He's controlling, you know, what cars are on the property and what's not on the property, and he has told the owner that a majority of the cars that are on that street are not part of the business, are not being worked on, are not part of the business, it's another neighbor's.
And share, so I'm also clear, the variance itself is for, to be clear.
So there's a number of different variances here, and one thing I want to point out, and Mr. Bleschman from Public Service can also weigh in on this. So again, while, you know, folks may feel like there's a limited number of parking spaces on the street, those are free to anyone.
Sure.
So again, even if a, and one of the questions here is in fact granting a variance to an auto repair facility, that is subject of a code violation, and whether or not that's appropriate within this area, that is sort of a question, you know, that said, the business is operating, so the hardship, either it is or it isn't. So, you know, a number of the, I think, variances are connected to whether or not this business can in fact operate within this environment. Again, we have both city staff and the Columbus South Side Area Commission saying yes, they think that this is appropriate within that area. So when we talk about like the variances that connect it potentially to that sidewalk sort of issue, that's one that's sort of zoning adjacent, where, again, as we've sort of talked about earlier, that is in fact a code requirement that that sidewalk, once it's installed, it's upkept by the owner. So it's gonna be something that I think council wants to take to Department of Public Service to make sure that that is in fact...
I know them well.
Yep. So anyways, so I don't know if that answered your question or not, councilmember.
I just wanted to be clear on what we're deciding on today, so that as we're having conversations, I think sometimes, to your point, there are like zoning adjacent issues. I just want to be clear on the decision we're making today, so that we can focus on that, because I think there are other things that we can then address after, potentially, or before we pass. I just want to be sure that we're all clear.
Yep, no, absolutely, and I think a number of the issues that Mr. Kirk identified are ones that are not necessarily related directly to the variance itself, and I think, and I'm certainly not gonna speak for Mr. Kirk, but I think what we've heard is a little bit concerned about, hey, these may get, you know, worse based upon this being granted. That said, they're not ones that we necessarily control with the granting or not granting of a variance.
Councilmember Green?
I'm sorry, I just want to ask, I think, the same question over again, but just in layman's terms, to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So we have got the issue of the zoning, and then the other issues are issues of code, right? Like code enforcement, so they're not, they would be separate things, am I understanding that correctly? Kind of, yes, okay. That makes sense to me, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant's representative at this time? I did want to pause, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bleschman, based on this conversation, if anything that you all wanted to weigh in on regarding this application, based upon either questions from council members, or certainly questions from the speakers here this evening?
Councilmember Dorance, perhaps I could just add an additional item related to if there is an existing sidewalk present that's in disrepair, that would be subject to the various city codes related to sidewalk, and would potentially be subject to a notice of violation, that would be a process through our Department of Public Service. In regards to the parking, that would also be an enforcement issue based on, you know, if there are vehicles that are parking in the right-ofway for longer durations of period than are permitted by city code... than are permitted by city code, that would be a parking enforcement issue.
And Mr. Blushman, to dig into that a little bit further, so again, anyone can park in any city street unless it's within a restricted parking area for up to 24 hours without, or is it 24 or 48 hours without moving their car?
I believe it's 72, unless the code has changed recently, but I believe after that, if, you know, they're parking there for weeks, or even a car in disrepair, that would be some type of enforcement issue for...
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant's representative at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to thank folks coming down to speak here tonight. I think a number of the issues that were asked by the public speaker tonight, again, about sort of the orientation of the gate, I think have been asked and answered. I do think there's a number of things here that we want to make sure that are brought up either to Department of Public Service, or within Department of Building and Zoning Services within a code enforcement issue, but again, those are not necessarily that are directly related, I think, to the variance here itself. I did want to pause, I think Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla has a...
I did want to say to our public speaker who was here today, I do want to follow up with Public Service. I already just, I had made a note, just so that we can understand, because as we're looking at the, this area, it's both there and someplace else, just so we can go, both get clarity for the property owner, clarity for the neighbors, just so we can understand, because I also think that we're solving one issue to the point, right?
Yep.
But we're not necessarily solving another one, and it's causing safety issues and other challenges in the neighborhood, so I, you do have my commitments, are that we will follow up, so thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, councilmember, for doing so. Some of the, I think some of the issues that the public speaker brought up are directly within one of your committees, so I want to make sure that, my office will make sure that we get that information over to basically be able to make sure that it's facilitated by moving down the line. So unless there's any other questions or comments from council members, I first move to accept the staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staff is the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. I finally move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance number 1298-2025, granted variance provisions to Section 3332.05 R3 Residential District, 3312.49 Required Parking, and 3332.054 Area District Lot With Requirements, and 3332.25 Maximum Side Yard Required. The Columbus city codes are properly located at 576 Fairwood Avenue to allow two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the requested council variance will allow two-unit dwelling with accompanying variances to lot widths, side yards, and required parking. Variance is required because the current zoning district only allows a single-unit dwelling per lot. The proposal has approvals from the City Staff and the Near East Area Commission. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staff is the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, and finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1333...
President Pro Tem, may I make a comment, preliminary comment?
Councilmember Beatty.
Before we zip through the rest of the agenda, I just wanted to point out that, you know, four out of the next eight involve a two-family dwelling, either detached or detached on a single-family lot. And although this may go beyond my time here, you know, this is light density, this is missing middle housing, adding needing units to these particular neighborhoods. It is my hope that in the future, as we work with the administration on Title 33 changes and Title 34 changes, that we will encourage more of this light density and missing middle housing and breaking down these barriers, so folks don't have to fill our agenda with these, just for a duplex that will have four to seven variances. Merely a comment.
Thank you, councilmember, and I believe, well, I will speak for myself, and I think the other councilmembers are nodding, we agree with you, and I know you're gonna be working very hard in the coming months on that effort, and I certainly support that, and I think everyone in this body is interested in learning more and trying to move forward towards that light density that we know that, where that missing housing needs to be across our city, and not just, you know, a single-family house or a giant apartment complex. There's plenty in between that we know we need to have built in this community to make sure that we meet our housing needs and meet families where they're at, so thank you. So again, we have got ordinance number 1333-2025, granted variance provisions to Section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3312.49 Required Parking, 3321.05 B1 Vision Clearance, 3332.05 A4 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.13 R3 Area District Requirements, 3332.22 Building Lines and Corner Lots, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yard Required, and 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard. The Columbus city codes are properly located at 1558 East Long Street to allow two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with two single-unit dwellings, and the requested council variance will conform the existing carriage house dwelling on the north side lot and allow for its expansion. A council variance is required because the current zoning district only allows one unit dwelling per lots. The proposal is approved from City Staff and the Near East Area Commission. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staff is the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, and finally move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1364-2025, granted variance provisions to Section 3332.02 R Real District, 3312.49 Required Parking, and 3332.06 R Real District Requirements, and 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted. The Columbus city codes are properly located at 221 Sagmore Drive to allow a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R Real District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the requested council variance will allow a two-unit dwelling, which is not allowable in the current zoning district. Variance is required to parking area requirements, minimum side yard are also included in this request. Proposal is approved from City Staff and the North Central Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, excuse me, Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staff is the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
And finally move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1365-2025, granted variance provisions to Section 3332.033 R2 Residential District, 3312.49 Required Parking. The Columbus city codes are properly located at 2071 Charlesberry Court West to allow a type A childcare facility, or childcare home with reduced parking in the R2 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow a dwelling to be used as a type A childcare home with which is prohibited in the current zoning district. A variance to reduce the required parking from three to two spaces is also included in this request. Proposal is approved from City Staff and the Northland Community Council. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staff is the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, and finally move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1370-2025, to granted variance provisions to Section 3332.05A Area District Lot With Requirements, and 3332.26C3 Minimum Side Yard Permitted. The Columbus city codes are properly located at 1207 East Whittier Street to allow reduced development standards for a two-unit dwelling in the AR1 Apart Residential District. Site, this is the companion variance of rezoning ordinance we considered earlier on our agenda tonight. The requested variance proposed a two-unit dwelling, and variance for reduced lot width and minimum side yard has been deemed necessary. Proposal has approvals from City Staff and the Columbus South Side Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staff is the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, and finally move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Dorn, Screen, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1374-2025, to granted variance provisions to Section 3332.029 SR Suburban District, and 3312.49 Required Parking. The Columbus city codes are properly located at 1260 Chesterton Lane to allow a type A childcare home with reduced parking in the SR Suburban District. The site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow the dwelling to be used as a type A childcare home, which must comply with Ohio Revised Code requirements. The request will also include the variance required parking. Proposal is approved from City Staff and the Northland Community Council. I first move to accept the staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.